I would like to call the January 11, 2021 meeting, special emergency meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen to order. The town of Acton, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Acton Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. The town hall is closed to the public. To participate remotely from the computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting. That's webinar, HTTPS, colon forward slash forward slash zoom.us, forward slash J, forward slash 503918785, or from a telephone dial 646-876-9923, and enter webinar ID 503918785. Telephone users may dial star nine to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. Tonight's emergency special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will proceed in this manner. First, we will hear from school committee members Kira Wilson Cook and Evelyn Abaya Asa. Kira and Evelyn will have unlimited time to speak to make their remarks. Then we will hear from, for up to three minutes each, from other members of the regional school committee who may wish to speak, and from members of the Diversity Equity Inclusivity Commission who may wish to speak, and finally, from citizens who may wish to speak. Everyone will be heard. We will then hear from Town Manager John Mangiardi and Police Chief Rich Burrows with an update on the police investigation. Finally, the board will discuss and vote on a statement the chair has prepared in response to the hate incident at Thursday evening's school committee meeting. The draft statement was publicly posted ahead of this meeting. So Evelyn, would you wish to speak first?
So I have not been given permission to do this. Someone else needs to allow everyone to speak and also make me a co-host.
Okay. Do that.
Okay, that's done. You see. Evelyn, I've allowed you to-
Yeah, I am all with it now.
Okay. Please go ahead. Please go for it.
Thank you. Thanks to the Acton Board of Selectmen for the invitation to join your meeting today and for the opportunity to speak. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone in the community that has shown so much love and support for Kira and me. Your kindness is very much appreciated. It's made us feel as if belonging, and your support has renewed our commitment to continue to work hard to ensure every kid in this school district gets the best education. I am forever grateful for the opportunity to represent the residents of Boxborough and to serve the families of the Acton-Boxborough community. This girl from Ghana who immigrated to the United States 21 years ago never envisaged an opportunity to be elected to serve in any capacity in this country. However, we live in a great country. That provides opportunity for whoever is willing to work hard. I am appreciative of this privilege given to me by the residents of Boxborough. I do not take it for granted. My willingness to serve is my way of giving back to a community that welcomed me and my family when we moved here about eight years ago. The opportunity to be here today is a small step in the right direction to make change in our community. As leaders of this community, people listen to you. People follow your lead. People look after you. So when you demonstrate a commitment to an issue, it's taken seriously. The simple step of giving Kira and I a seat at the table today, you are echoing throughout this community that Kira Wilson Cook and Evelyn Abaya Isa matter, that we matter as fellow human beings. You are echoing across the community that men, women, children in this community that look like Kira and Evelyn matter and deserve a seat at the table. Although this small step could have been taken weeks ago, you are now demonstrating that as a community, we will not stand for hate and will not make, and will make space for love, inclusion, and equity. This small step you've taken today is finally acknowledging that racism exists in our community and that you are willing to do something about it. No one should be subjected to abuse in their workplace, and no one should be dehumanized whilst performing their work responsibilities, especially when that workplace is where one is given freely back to their community. It is a basic human right to want to live in a community where one feels safe, included, and loved. Some people in this community have said, "To blacks and indigenous people of color, you should have thought about it before moving to Acton or Boxborough." Others have said, "Leave if you don't feel welcome. It's not the only place to raise your kids." All that is true. However, black and brown people are humans too. We want the same things others want for their families. We want a safe community with great schools to raise our kids, and we hope to be welcomed here. The issue of race has been so ingrained into the fiber of this country, so much so that unless one is willing to table their biases for a minute, take, look at things through a different lens and willing to accept that this is something you may not fully understand or know. It is easy to irrationally take offense when the topic comes up or feel labeled. Racism can be complicated to explain. So don't be quick to dismiss it if you have not lived it. I hope that as a community, we can come together to tackle this monster, get it out of our towns, and make space for black indigenous people of color in this community to coexist with you. The incidents of the last few weeks have been unfortunate, and it saddens me to think that many parents have been put in a position to have to explain these horrific events to their children and help them make sense of it. Racism is expensive. The attack on Kira and I did not only affect us and our families. It affected our colleagues on the school committee, our friends, our neighbors, and the entire community. Resources have been utilized that could have been put towards other things that would benefit a larger community. Racism is disruptive. The incidents of the last few weeks has distracted us from our real job as school committee members, district, and town leaders. I'm hopeful that as a community, we can go past the issues, forge a path forward, and coexist as neighbors and flush racism out of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Evelyn. Okay, Kira. Kira, you should be able to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for the invitation to speak. I want to thank our many neighbors throughout Acton and Boxborough, as well as many teachers across our school district and leaders in both towns for once again reaching out to me to express their support. So many who live in our two towns are good, caring people who are shocked and disgusted by the events of the past few weeks. Let's be clear about what happened to Evelyn Abaya Isa. I mean, what happened, what happened? Evelyn Abaya Isa and I were, once again, dehumanized while carrying out our elected duties on behalf of the students and families of Acton and Boxborough. I have been subjected to racist slurs and humiliation in public, on camera, while doing the job you elected me to do. I am a volunteer. A neighbor asked me to step up and serve, and I answered the call in good faith. While I am grateful that this body has chosen to invite Evelyn and me to this meeting and be an active part of the town's actions in the wake of the second incident, I call on the Board of Selectmen to do what it failed to do at the last emergency meeting. Say our names and state clearly that racist slurs are being directed at us, the school committee's two black members. Please tell our towns that racist attacks of any kind on anyone will not be tolerated. Please do not weaken the statement you issued at the last emergency meeting, a statement that says the board deplores and denounces these acts of hatred, but then focusing the discussion on those who weren't the targets of the attacks. Please state as fact that racism is an ongoing problem that our community must address. None of this happened last time, and it needs to happen this time. Acton and Boxborough are not white towns that just happen to have people of color living in them. We are not interlopers in someone else's community. This is our community as much as anyone else's. We are people who chose this town to live, to raise our children, to build lives here. These recent events have damaged that tranquility for some Actonians. There are neighbors among us who are scared and need more support to feel seen, heard, known, and welcome in our towns. I call on this board to reject and rebuke those who would try to marginalize any Actonian for the color of their skin, or the language that they speak, or the religion that they practice, or where they were born. Since the December 17 verbal attack, there are some neighbors and leaders in our community who have called for more dialogue and to simply have a conversation about the views and values within our town, as if that will be an instant penance to the ongoing harmful events. There cannot be productive dialogue and conversation until everyone acknowledges that it's not okay to call me the N-word. There cannot be feeling until there's agreement and consensus in this town that racism is unacceptable. And the Board of Selectmen, as the executive body of this town, has a responsibility to cement that consensus. That has to happen first. This is your job. Do it. Once we have unalloyed consensus on this starting point, then we can move on to conversations and dialogue. First things first. As long as that consensus remains unbuilt, and as long as the racist verbal attacks continue, a clear message is being sent to the people of our town. There's a problem, and we won't do everything we can to fix it. Imagine what that communicates to our children, especially our children of color. Imagine what that communicates to those who consider running for office here, especially potential candidates of color. Imagine what that communicates to those who would consider moving to or staying in Acton, especially our families of color. There is too much work for this body and for our school committee to address for this disruption to continue. Budget season has started. Our schools continue to operate under extraordinary circumstances. There are students who need our full focus right now. We no longer have time for disruption and delay. Say what needs to be said. What's happening is wrong, and it's wrong that it happened yet again, and it will not be tolerated. Disagreement is fine, but abuse of systems and public servants will not be tolerated. Take this firm stand so that we can get back to work on the significant needs of our town. I am honored to serve the town of Acton, and I look forward to continuing my work. I expect to continue a good working relationship with you, and I expect to do my work without fear, without abuse, and without humiliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira.
Okay, if there are any members of the school committee or the DEIC that would like to speak, please raise your hands.
You take the school committee members first, please.
I'll do that. Amy, Christian Mercy, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for allowing the school committee members to also speak. Last Thursday's disgusting attack on Evelyn and Kira was so disheartening and upsetting, and all I could feel was how dare any individual anonymously insert themselves into a meeting of dedicated volunteers to spew hate. Evelyn and Kira have put themselves into the public space because they feel compelled to volunteer their expertise and viewpoints to make our schools and towns the best possible. I'm completely done with these attacks and incredibly upset that Kira and Evelyn have felt personally threatened and dehumanized. I am sickened, and I completely denounce these attacks. I just want to say to Evelyn and Kira, I am truly honored to serve with you. Despite all of this that you have been subjected to, you still are willing to reach out and discuss the business at hand, and I just want to thank you for that because I'm not sure that I would have the same level of bravery that you do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
John Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a brief statement, but I do want to remind everybody that there were extensive remarks from the school committee at our special meeting on the 23rd dealing with the first attack. And I simply wanted to go on record again as saying that I stand with Evelyn, I stand with Kira. I love the experiences, the perspective, and the wisdom that their voices bring to our committee and our community. And as Kira, you know, very directly said, the abuse, you know, of Kira and Evelyn is simply unacceptable.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
So, Mr. Chair, no other member of the school committee has their hand raised?
There's one DEIC.
There's one member of the DEIC with her hand raised. Diane Randolph Jones, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
I wanted to take an opportunity to thank both Evelyn and Kira for their bravery in continuing to serve and continuing to speak up. What I also wanted to say is that what was said, what the racist comments that were made, they are not jokes, they are not simply rudeness. I know that a number of our community members have weighed in online and have shared that maybe it's just kids, maybe it's just... That does not remove it from being powerful. It does not remove it from being damaging. It does not stop it from ostracizing members of the community. And each and every single time I think about these two having been faced directly with these types of comments, I realize, one, that they have directly been traumatized by these events, but these are not events that were solely meant to traumatize them. I receive them as threats. Myself, as a person, as a woman of color with a child of color attending the school district, these are one of, or the start of, my worst nightmare, and I profoundly urge something to happen. Not simply a statement, not simply a meeting, but something to happen so that people recognize that this, again, is not focused solely on two very important women, black women in our community, but it is a problem and a threat for every single one of us, some more directly than others. But it is our children, whether they be black, or white, or Asian, or Latino, or any other ethnicity or race that is within our communities that is being subject to these threats, to this danger that is born of supremacy and hatred and racism that should not exist in Acton, but most certainly does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other DEIC?
There are no more members of the school committee or DEIC.
So let's have general public citizen comments.
Mike Rothbaum, please go ahead.
Hi, David, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. I am Rabbi Mike Rothbaum. I live in Acton. I serve Congregation Beth Elohim here in Acton. I am proud to serve a community based in Acton. Acton is a nice town. Our congregants, our neighbors here on 22 Tuttle Street are nice people. But sometimes we're learning, nice is not enough. When black folks tell us that they are treated differently by public officials, nice is not enough. When Jewish students have money thrown at them in our schools, when fellow students tell them Holocaust jokes, nice is not enough. When black students are attacked with the N-word, when Nazi graffiti shows up around town, and you tell us nicely, that's not us, that's not who we are. Instead of validating our fear and our anger, nice is not enough. And when two black women engaged in town business are assaulted, nice is not enough. And it seems sometimes that when we tell you that nice is not enough, you're afraid of what we're telling you. You're afraid it means your town isn't as nice as you thought. And I feel for you. I honor your fear. It's honest. But in those times, we've seen where that fear leads you. Sometimes it's not pretty. Sometimes your niceness evaporates. You tell us to move on. You tell us not to focus on the trauma and the dehumanization, as if our wounds can be healed by ignoring them. You tell us to sit with and try to understand the very people who have assaulted us, as if common ground is to be found between perpetrators of dehumanization and their targets. You expect us to take part in a both-sides argument regarding our very humanity. Or worse, you ostracize us for telling you these hard truths. You punish others for talking to us. You gossip about us, call us names, troublemakers, pushy, unreasonable. You shout at us. You say that we're the real racists. Or you show up at our front doors to shout at our faces, as happened to one of the members of the school committee. It seems in those moments you'd rather us be quiet and civil and suffer in silence than hear our voices and hear these hard truths. You seem more troubled by a rabbi who refuses to accept antisemitism than the casual antisemitism that students at AB schools have reported every year that I've been here. And you seem more uncomfortable hearing the word racism than the existence of racism. In the Talmud, there's a rabbi named Nachum. And when something bad would happen, he would say, "Gam zulatova." In Hebrew, this means, "This too is for the good." As abhorrent and disgusting as was the racist language spoken at the last two school committee meetings, it too can be for the good. It can be for the good if it makes us realize that nice is not enough. It can be for the good if it makes us look at who we are. It can be for the good if, instead of attacking the members of the community who tell us what we don't want to hear, instead of making excuses, instead of being consumed and paralyzed by our fear, we see this as an opportunity. An opportunity for us to sit in our fear and our discomfort and finally take responsibility for the work that needs to be done in this town. Whether or not it will be for the good, well, that's in our hands. That part is up to us. Being nice is not the same thing as doing right. Vague professions of goodwill do not suffice. Tell the truth. Vow to do better.
One minute left.
Deploy resources. Make staffing decisions to ensure that we will do better. Together, perhaps, we'll all be worthy of redemption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so I want people to know that I'm not going to call on you if you just a first name or initials. So rename yourself to your full name. And also, if you need to identify yourself another way, you can send an email with the name you're signed in as to manager@actonma.gov. Diana Tobin, please go ahead.
Here we go. Okay, yes, hi. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak. Anytime somebody is defiled or hurt, and where I live or that I know about it, it hurts me, and it hurts everybody. And it could be, any one of us could be in that same situation. Only unfortunately, it's these lovely people who are doing service for us. I've been an Acton resident for three years, and once I was in the town, I found out what was going on. And we are a lovely town, but we can't tolerate this. I'm a senior citizen, and there's a lot of pressure now, and I know a lot of people are feeling from COVID. But it doesn't matter. We still have to take care of this and make sure that everybody is safe and able to live comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Kallak, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Charlie.
Hi, Charlie Kallak. There is a piece of information missing in all this discussion. And that's, who is it that did these deplorable things to, at the school committee? I was there. We don't know. Perhaps the chief who's going to speak later will give us some information, but at this time, at this point, we don't know who that was. So why do we assume it was somebody from Acton or Boxborough? That things need to be done to prevent this. Of course, things should be done to prevent this. That's a technical issue of who's allowed to speak at a school committee Zoom meeting. That's not something that can be fixed by making speeches. I fully understand how upsetting it would be to be called names and so on. But I would tell to Evelyn and Kira, there is plenty of evidence that they are more than welcome in this town. I don't have the numbers for Evelyn, but Kira was elected by more votes than anybody else. That's pretty significant. This is not a racist town. Let's not generalize. During the 50, more than 50 years that I've been here, the town has changed, as is the demographics of this whole area. It has changed considerably without commissions, without policy decisions, without speeches. It's now a very diverse town, both by where people were from, their religion, and so on. When incidents happen such as the rabbi described, it's important to find out who did it. And we've had some surprises in that, in those efforts. Perhaps he's aware of them. Of course, it should be declared unacceptable, but just declaring something to be unacceptable is not going to fix it. I think we are exaggerating what happened in the school committee. I don't know who did it. I don't know what their motivation may have been. I don't even know if they directed this at Evelyn and Kira. I just don't know.
One minute left.
And I submit that nor does anybody- And I submit that, nor does anybody else. I think we shall continue to be the kind of town we are, where everybody's welcome. Specific incidents do not change that. So let's be a little more realistic rather than make speeches. Thank you.
Thank you. My cock, please go ahead.
No, 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 no. Okay, David, don't let my cock on.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that we know?
Um there there are other people, um yes. Cindy Soul, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I want to echo deep appreciation and respect and gratitude to Evelyn and Kira for their dedication and their work and their commitment to helping to make this town a better place. I also appreciate the bravery that they exhibit and that black women have experienced and exhibited throughout history, making commitments to trying to make the world more equitable and safe for everyone. I just also want to say that I hope that it's a time that they are not the only ones that need to be exhibiting bravery at this point. And I think that it's incumbent upon the rest of us to get braver and to speak up and to be willing to look broadly and deeply at any ways that we as white people have allowed racism to continue to the extent. And I have to believe the voices of the students and the people who have said for years that they have experienced these assaults, verbal assaults, whatever in Acton. I want to acknowledge those voices and I want to ask us to commit to becoming brave people alongside them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Uh Gihan Amara Singhhe. Hope I got your last name correctly.
Thank you, Mister David. Um I'm Gihan and um I have two young kids in um our school system currently. Um very young. Um first of all, I want to thank you uh um all of you, the school um uh officials and the law enforcement officials, um as well as the Acton town officials for the grateful you guys have been done um and doing currently. Um however, with the the base uh based on recent events that uh we currently see, um I am deeply concerned um what is happening around us, especially the events that happened um in our towns previously. There was many events that happened in school property grounds, um drawings, um in school grounds and the locals that there is um there is drawings in front of our library. I think it's it happened um and grocery groceries that this this has happened. So I'm I'm very deeply concerned about this issue. And the other thing I want you to bring is and your attention is, it seems like um neo-Nazi groups is very active on our street. There is documentaries, there is a lot of information uh with the with our law enforcement um officials that they are out there, we can study them, but it has been escalated a lot. It has been openly now people um um come and display these visuals that um I cannot imagine some of the uh things that I saw in recent events, that it's against our human human race and 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 our, you know, as American, I'm a very proud American and I love this country. And this is the country that we tell everybody how to behave and how the system should work. And in this country, to seeing that, I'm very deeply concerned. But however, um um looking at information that it seems there are certain neo-Nazi groups that radicalizing our kids and they preaching out to these kids and they're recruiting, it seems. And they're radicalizing this kid um as though they don't know they're still young kids. They see things and they could go into the wrong path. So it seems that a lot of activities happening and kids may go into wrong directions. So we need to be aware of these situations um in our school system, most importantly. So um I think prevention is very important that we need to do uh because now we have drawings. Then um certain attacks on this um uh um school um 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 meetings happen. There could be worse thing could happen next. That's what we need to emphasize, that we need to think about that way. Somebody could do something bad because these kids, then they're just kids out of school or in school. They don't know what's going on. They join something bad. Bad things could happen. So we need to go be more vigilant uh um and that's my my concern. At the same time, I have I have two um two question actually uh for the school system. With the previous events in the school system, um have you um um may you guys may not able to tell me? Um but have you identified any of these individuals who involve in the past incidents? The incidents that happened, um um have they identified? Because there is situations like I remember there was a situation in the school property, kid is playing in the school and there was a guy who came and said, you you have to go back. You you don't want to stay here. Uh so that's my first question that um have we identified any individuals? If they do, we need to get them into the right path. Of course, that's that's what we need to do. And the other one is, um do we have a system within our school system to kid that can report these kind of activities to our school officials? That's the second part. Do we have a correct system? And and third one is, are we or are you satisfied with the current process and the protocols we are having in our um society to protect our community and school? And thank you very much again. And we are very proud to be Actonians. And thank you very much for your services to our um town. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Heinz, please go ahead.
Uh good evening. Uh thank you for um letting me speak for a moment. I would first like to thank um Kira and Evelyn, I speak your names um for your tireless work for on behalf of our families and children in town. What happened to you is unacceptable. And regardless of um if we know who did it, who did these awful acts towards the two of you, it should not have happened. Um because it happened um on an official town meeting and we need to be able to um find out who did this. But uh a a previous person talked about if we don't know who who did it, why are we so much concerned? We need to be concerned because it happened to someone in our community, two people in our community. And so I urge our town leaders, which includes the select board, the police um chief and uh the department, to listen with compassion and care in a timely manner and to act with justice and to provide resources that will enable our town to move in a positive direction. I'm a woman of color and I serve proudly on the D E I C. And I want to be able for people to be able to come and share their stories, not only for us to listen, but for us to act. We could all listen compassionately, but we have to move beyond just listening. We have to act and act justly. And so I would like to again encourage our community to stand together and to make sure that people know that when an injustice happens to any of us, it happens to all of us. A previous person also talked about uh we're we're using resources. I think it was Kara that we're using resources that we could have been used uh somewhere else and 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 other programs in our town. But the reality is that this happens.
One minute, one minute left.
Thank you. And I hope that as this body that is coming together tonight, I applaud you for doing that. And but I also would like you to uh act justly towards these two women and also work towards making our town uh with with the community members uh to make it a better town. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandra.
Liz McGovern, please go ahead.
Um hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Liz McGovern. I live on Mohawk Drive. I moved to Acton in the year two thousand, so I've been here twenty years. Um for the first eight years I lived here, um I am a stepparent and a parent and moved in Acton as a white woman, um feeling that this was a nice, lovely, kind uh place and a beautiful place to raise a family. Um in two thousand eight, our family adopted a a son of color. Um and I came to realize as a white woman of a child of color, um really how much racism is prevalent all the time in our town. Um yeah, it's so we people talk about these isolated incidents as if these are one offs or two offs of some crazy person. But that is not true. That is not the experience at all of our of our students of color, of our families of color. This is a day to day, this is real. Um and as a white person, I did not see it. And even as a white mother, I do not see it. But I know from the experiences that my son has gone through on a regular basis, this is what our our colleagues and friends and neighbors and loved ones of color are experiencing on a daily basis at large scale and small scale. So I think this idea that we're not racist and that this is just a nice place and these are one offs of some crazy person is not true. This is deeply ingrained in the DNA of who we are, um as our past as America, as our past of Acton. Um and we have to be honest, these are real. We need to listen deeply um and believe because these stories are real. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Silverman, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. Uh my name is Cindy Silverman. I have been uh a resident of Acton for over thirty years. Uh I have loved Acton. We raised our children here. Uh but I will say first of all that I am grateful to Kira and Evelyn for their bravery. And I am very, very sorry that you continue to experience um the kind of racist experiences that you have had at the last two meetings. I would like to believe these are one offs, but they are not. I remember incidents of antisemitism dating back to when my children were in elementary school here in Acton. I remember racist incidents dating back to when my children were in high school and they graduated in the uh late nineties and early two thousands. To say that this is not who we are is to deny that these incidents are happening, these are uh this is part of our uh community DNA. And until we can look this monster in the eye, uh it is not going to change. Uh we we must, it 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 would be nice if we could zero in on who did this, but it's not as important as recognizing uh that we have to support the victims of racism, of of racist attacks. Um you need to speak their names and we need to move forward forcefully in the education of our children and in the education of our community to to better respond to the victims of these attacks and to understand where our own racist feelings may be impacting our our own decisions and move from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Mary Helen, please go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Do you do you have two devices on, Mary Helen?
I'm gonna turn that off just a moment. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um my family and I moved to Acton in twenty twenty from elsewhere in Massachusetts where we have proudly stood up for our neighbors of color, people of many traditions, many orientations and identities. We felt safer moving here than to any suburb where heat is more comfortably harbored. We proudly transplanted our Black Lives Matter signs, seeing that so many of our wonderful neighbors here felt safe to do likewise. We are a white, identified, interreligious family. We have been part of communities working for justice and sustainability and we continue to do that as part of our lives. As we get to know our new community in Acton, we are unsurprised to learn that racism lurks here as it does in the hearts of humans everywhere. And we're gratified to see so many local leaders and community members mobilizing to stand up in opposition in opposition to hatred and in solidarity with the people enduring the trauma of hate-filled racist sexist attacks. We stand with and beside the leaders of the school committee. And we stand with and beside all community members working to preserve safety and promote and advance justice. We note with sadness that our Black Lives Matter sign has apparently been stolen in recent days. We are not naive enough to expect political homogeneity anywhere, nor do we expect hate and bigotry to go away. They are part of the human condition. We understand the work of teaching anti-racism involves lots of self-reflection and strengthening of our local stand-up culture, helping people of all ages learn and practice the challenging skills of being a safe and trustworthy upstander.
One minute left.
What training and education resources does the town of Acton now provide? To help train local adults and all the students in Acton, whether they're in the district schools or going to other schools, on how to be upstanders and help actively speak up against hatred, bigotry, racism, sexism, xenophobia, homophobia, and help build bridges over people's reactive fear of the other. We look forward to taking advantage of or helping to promote any such local resources going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Uh that's that's all, John.
Okay, thank you. Thank every all of you for your thoughtful comments this evening. Um uh let me turn it over to John and Chief Burrows for an update on the police investigation.
Uh thank you, members of the board. Uh since uh the incident first occurred December seventeenth, our police department has prioritized uh the investigation as a top priority for the department. Uh when it another incident occurred uh last week, that was uh joined together and it's being uh combined and they're working very hard on that. Chief Burrows is in the room, virtual room tonight to provide a brief update on uh where we are as of today. Uh but as you can understand, with an active investigation, there are details that we really can't discuss at this point. Uh I know we we both look forward to providing more details when it's appropriate to do so. Chief?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, yes.
Yes, um so I want to assure you, as the town manager said, that we have prioritized this investigation. I do have to remind everyone that these cases can take some time. Uh we are moving as fast as we can. We have made significant progress even as of today, and I look forward to updating the board as soon as we can.
Are there are there are there comments from from board members? Comments or questions? Dean?
Yeah, to the to the chief and and I I respect the situation you're in and and want to make sure that there's nothing that the board is going to do or say that's going to uh cause any problems during investigation. Uh I guess my biggest question is, is there any resources that additional resources you feel you might need? Uh I know you've been in contact with the town manager about this, but I just wanted to relay my personal feelings that if there's anything else that you need to help you in your work, um please reach out to us and and to the town manager and Make sure that we can do whatever we can to uh bring this to, if possible, to a successful conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, uh David?
Yes, I I just wanted to say at this point con- concerning this, there's really no good technological solution to this problem. Uh we have a tradition of participation in our community and you know, we cannot completely stop the risk of these. Tests without severely um restricting public participation, which neither we nor the school committee want to do. Uh we have, you know, I I just wanted to tell people because they asked me that we are taking other measures to try to reduce it, but we. We we can't eliminate the risk entirely.
Uh Jim.
Um I I just wanted to, I I'm really glad we started with hearing from Kara and Evelyn. Uh that to me was the most uh heartfelt and important part of the meeting. Um you know, we're gonna move on to having a statement and 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 it's gonna be simple and it's gonna be a fine statement. But to me, the key part of this meeting already has happened, which was um listening to Kara and Evelyn. And um I guess I'm I'm also listening uh in our discussions. Uh with with a with a with a with a diff with a with another lens or a different, where do you go, lens, ears don't have lenses, but anyway. Here I am, I'm listening with this in mind that there are, we all want more people of color. Including black people to be on our boards and committees. Um and so how we proceed on this relatively straightforward awful incident. Uh is 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 a clue. Is a clue for people who are considering serving on boards and committees of of whether we're gonna be there. Uh the rest of us to protect them and to call out what's wrong. Um whether it's something obvious or whether it's something more subtle. Um and so I I guess to that end, I guess I'd also want to say that when I heard directly. From Kara and Evelyn about the impact of this on them, I knew that um. When 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 people said e- even tonight that um we're exaggerating. Um that's not true. This this was, this incident actually had an impact, um and a deep impact. Uh because we've heard that directly, we know that now. And when um people say um, well, we don't know if this was directed at Kara and Evelyn. Um no, we do know that. Um we know from the words that were used that these were. It it these were explicitly directed at the black people on the school committee, on Kara and Evelyn. Um and especially when it's happened a second time, uh we know that this is this is a targeted action. Um so I want to make sure that got said. Um I think that's it, thanks.
Uh Joe?
Yeah, I I have been in town over fifty years and my first. Racial incident was with the babysitter of the League of Women Voters when my daughter, who's now. Fifty, who reported to me that the babysitter. Was calling the baby lackey, not once, not twice, but during the whole session. So this is not new, but it is something we need to pay attention to. Now in this heightened climate. And as a woman and the second woman elected in town, I had my issues early on. And I have some sympathy with both Evelyn and Kara.
Uh David?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I've been contacted by people about the response to these hateful attacks that do not want. Us to respond forcefully. They say they want to go slow or that we should strive for unity or that we shouldn't do anything to inflame the situation. When I ask them specifically what they would do differently, they can't give me an answer. They can only say that we need to be sensitive to other points of view. My question is, what other point of view? When when I weigh people's basic rights on one side and people's uh discomfort on the other side, the choice is clear. We can't go slow. The argument for unity among the majority has been used as an excuse. To disenfranchise minority groups for a long time. Instead, let's become known as a unified community against racism. I prefer not to categorize individuals racist. However, there can be no doubt that there's racism here. We see incidents month after month. Two percent of uh racist comments and feedback to the school committee is not an acceptable level. While we don't know where the Zoom bombing is coming from, we do know where the racist feedback came from. In fact, I could even read their names at this meeting. Um we we do know where the local harassment came from that has happened at school committees homes. Um it's not some group from Russia or other state or something like that. I I believe that the vast majority of people in our community are good people and well-intentioned, but being well-intentioned is not enough. We must forcibly speak out against these racist incidents and counter those that try to excuse them. It's unfair and exhausting for Kara and Evelyn to have to advocate for themselves. Disenfranchised people are put in on the defensive by frequently having to say, don't forget about me. It's it's not up to them to have to do that, it's up to the rest of us to speak up. I would never try to stifle anyone's opinion, especially actually people who disagree with me. People who've worked with me know that I enjoy an exchange of ideas. However, tactics of harassment and disenfranchisement do not further an exchange of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. John or the chief, do you have anything further to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so um John, if you would put on the screen the the draft statement that. Um I had prepared and I'll read it uh to the meeting.
Or I can put it up, I have it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, sure.
Can you guys see that now?
Okay. This would be entitled statement by the Board of Selectmen, January eleven, twenty twenty one. Harassment and dehumanization of elected public officials. Is unacceptable in the town of Acton and will not be tolerated. On behalf of the town of Acton, the Board of you Board of Selectmen unanimously condemns. The hateful racist language that school committee members Kara Wilson Cook of Acton. And Evelyn Obaya Asa of Boxborough have been subjected to during a school committee meeting. For the second time in three weeks. The attack on Evelyn and Kara is an attack against the community. Including all elected members of the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. As well as the two hundred and fifty community members who serve on Acton's nearly fifty boards. Committees and commissions. Together with town meeting, we are part of the oldest continuous form of local government in the world. We stand together. The Board of Selectmen pledges to make available the necessary financial resources to the Acton Police Department. So that the police may pursue and complete their investigations of the December seventeen and January seventh. Racist incidents. It is sad and disappointing that despite our increasingly diverse society and diverse town. Racial and ethnic stereotyping persists. It is incumbent on all of us locally, the Board of Selectmen, local government, individuals. Parents, our schools, our houses of worship and our businesses. To impress upon our children and adult neighbors and friends. That racism and racist acts have no place in Acton. It must stop. Other comments and questions from board members? Do I have then a motion to adopt? The statement by the Board of Selectmen dated January eleven, twenty twenty one. As a unanimous statement of this board?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? David, if you please call the roll.
Uh Mister Snyder-Bant?
Aye.
Ms Gardner?
Aye.
Mister Charter?
Aye.
Mister Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so that's unanimous.
Okay, so John, if we could get this statement um out on our website. And uh through our social media networks. Um. Um and let's move forward with that. Um there's no further business on the agenda. We are scheduled to meet again uh two weeks from tonight on uh January twenty fifth. Um so may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um uh David, if you'd call the roll please.
Mister Snyder-Grant?
Aye.
Ms Gardner?
Aye.
Mister Charter?
Aye.
Mister Benson?
Aye.
And I also say aye. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, a good evening and and for all participants, thank you for for joining us.
Thanks.